I ask you all to stand and ask Kristen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask you to remain standing. Selectman Kylie is not with us today. His mom passed away recently. And I'd like you to keep in your thoughts and prayers both his mom, Alice Kylie, and the family. Thank you. Let's see. We have two quick points of interest. One is a kind of an update. We are celebrating our 375th anniversary of the town of Fairfield. And as part of that celebration, on November 15th, Saturday night, we're going to have a grand gala worthy of a 375th anniversary at Sacred Heart University. I want to give special thanks to People's United for stepping up to be our title sponsor for that. There'll be more news coming out, but I want everybody to put it on your calendars for now. And then second, we are in the midst of another title run. The American Little League team won last night, five to three, over New Hampshire, I believe it is. And we want to wish them best of luck in their future games coming up this weekend. So with that, let's get back to business here. On the minutes, to consider and act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2014, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll be the second. Any discussion or changes to those minutes?
No.
All right. We ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have some recognition for Fairfield Girl Scout Elizabeth Van Winkle for earning the Gold Scout Gold Award. And that's one of the highest awards, or the highest award you can win. For those of you that are not familiar with the Girl Scouts, I'm informed that it is the equivalent to the Eagle Scout on the Boy Scout side of things. We have a proclamation to read here. And Elizabeth, if I could ask you to come up and stand at the podium so we can properly embarrass you as I read through this.
We're acknowledged.
Yes, acknowledged. That's what I meant. I was searching for the right word. From the town of Fairfield. Whereas Elizabeth Van Winkle has received the Girl Scouts of USA Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious award that a girl can earn in Girl scouting, this award is given to less than 6% of all the Girl Scouts. And whereas, the Gold Award requires the girl to spend at least 80 hours researching issues, assessing community needs and resources, building a team, and making a sustainable impact on the community, all of which Elizabeth has done. And whereas, Elizabeth's accomplishments reflect leadership and citizenship skills that set her apart as a community leader. And whereas, Elizabeth, has been involved in scouting since first grade and is a member of Troop 33056. And whereas, for her Gold Award project, Elizabeth led a summer writing program at Pequot Library in Southport. She designed the program to inspire a love of writing in elementary school students, creating interactive games and writing prompts. She also encouraged the students to work in groups to complete writing activities. A Fairfield Girl Scout troop will continue the program in the future. That's sustainable. Great. And whereas, one of her most fond memories of Girl Scouts was running Thinking Day for the Girl Scouts in Fairfield. We've got to hear more about that. And whereas, she will be a senior at Fairfield Little High School and plans to major in English and History in college. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim August 6th, 2014 as Elizabeth Van Winkle Day throughout Fairfield. Congratulations. I think Selectman McCarthy Vehi would like to say a few words.
I appreciate your hand and congratulations.
Thank you.
And Elizabeth, congratulations to you and to your parents, who I see here today too, for their support of you, but for your commitment and dedication. A lot of times we do, we talk about the Eagle Scout Award as an equivalent, but you in your own right have done something truly amazing, and I love the fact that you've set it up to be sustainable so that it can be taken forward to the future. So thank you for your leadership. I hope that you will continue to lead as you go into your senior year in college. On to college.
And just to build on it, as I look at the skills that you developed here and that you pointed out, one is I like the fact that you worked in teams. I like the fact that you taught your students to work in teams. That's one of the hardest things to do. If you look at our society today, getting people to work together is one of the challenges we face. But you've got to tell us a little bit more about Thinking Day. I just, I'm so intrigued with that. What was that about?
It's where we have a bunch of younger Girl Scout troops get together, and each troop represents a country. And then they go around the different booths and learn about different countries, and they can get little pins that like have representations of the countries so they can learn all about their culture and what they eat and stuff like that.
Fantastic. I think that there's no question that our world today needs more thinking. So congratulations officially again, and thank you on behalf of the town of Fairfield for making a difference.
Thank you.
Bye for now.
Continuing on, we have one resignation to report from the Fire Commission, Charlene Lebo, Democrat, 284 Berkeley Road, term 11/13 for 11/18. Item six, appointments. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment to the Ethics Commission. This requires a unanimous vote by the Board of Selectmen as well as majority vote by the RTM. Christopher J. Brogan, Democrat, 90 Southwood Road, for a term of 714 to 716. This is to fill a vacancy for Deborah Zief, whose term expired. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Now, second, now Chris is not here today, but I've worked with Mr. Brogan for a number of years. His terms on the RTM, he's somebody who's been respected on both sides of the aisle. His commentary has always been reasoned, very logical, very rational, and also very professional, as is reflected in his day job for a major, he's one of the corporate counsels for a major corporation located here in Connecticut. Do you have any comments?
No, I couldn't agree more. Mr. Brogan, I think would be an excellent choice to a really amazing Ethics Commission. We have quite a strong group of people, and I think he would join well. I also wanted to share that when Selectman Kylie shared that he was unable to attend today, he asked that I express his support as well. So though he can't be here to vote, he asked that I share that publicly also. So I think Chris Brogan will be an excellent choice for the Ethics Commission.
Good. Thank you. And unfortunately, Mr. Brogan couldn't make it. One of the challenges is in his corporate job that it does take a certain amount of time today. Unfortunately, it was one of those days that he was not able to get here. Any further discussion at this point?
No.
Any comments from the body? Or from public, sorry. Coming back to the body, seeing none. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Brogan, and thank you for your volunteer work for the town. Next up, to hear a report by Grassmere by the Sea on the programs at Grassmere by the Sea. Thank you. This is, just to clarify for everybody, this is part of an ongoing series of presentations to help our town, not only the Board of Selectmen, but our town, understand more about the great work that's done by the various nonprofits in town, and appreciate how much dedication and work goes into making our community special. So thank you for joining us, and please fill us in.
And that you all are supporting. So I'm Julia Portale. I'm the Vice President of Community Services for Jewish Senior Services, formerly the Jewish Home in Fairfield. And I'll just give you a little bit of background for those of you who aren't familiar with what we do at Grassmere, and then give you a little bit of an update on what we're doing today. So as some of you might know, Grassmere by the Sea Adult Day Services was created as a result of a merger between Grassmere Elder Care Center and the Jewish Home Adult Day Center in 2008, and is currently the only adult day center in Fairfield. When the town ran the elder care center, it was responsible for 100% of the operational costs and currently contributes about 6% of the operating costs for the program. In addition to the town of Fairfield, we operate the program with funds from the state of Connecticut, the federal government, our own subsidy, and then donations from area businesses and foundations. So there's really a lot of contribution from all different parts of the community, both locally and nationally. We're a certified medical model, adult day health program, not just a social model, but this is for people who have physical, cognitive, or emotional issues, and they are unable to remain home alone during the day. So the services allow caregivers and family members to remain in the workplace and otherwise receive a break from caregiving. So those of you who know who are taking care of people with Alzheimer's or some other medical issue, getting a break is a really important way to continue to provide care to your loved ones. Some of the things that we've done recently, we've expanded the hours of the program from, we were at 8:00 to 4:30, now we're at 7:30 to 5:00 to better accommodate working families. We provide transportation to and from the program for families in Fairfield. And just to give you a list of the kinds of things we provide there, as I said, it's a medical model, so we have nursing, social work, recreation, meals, rehab therapy, personal care services, including bathing and hairdressing, which is important for some family members, pet therapy, and then we do off-site day trips and have a specialized dementia program, wheelchair escort transportation from your doorstep to the center. We also provide caregiver support groups for both the participants, their caregivers, and then other people in the community. So even if you don't use the services, we offer it to the community as well. So just a couple statistics, and then I'll end. 70% of the Grassmere clients need assistance with moving around. 70% need help with bathing, and 80% have special needs related to Alzheimer's and/or dementia. So in spite of these challenges, one of the things that we've tried to do this year is really expand the opportunity for clients to integrate with some of the other programs going on in the town of Fairfield. So our clients, some of our clients who can get out, go with caregivers to the senior center for lunch a couple times a month, and recently brought donuts and coffee to the Fairfield Police and Fire Departments and thanking, to thank them for always responding to the calls. Over 50% of the Grassmere clients are Fairfield residents, about 80% are men, women, and 20% are men. And we're very appreciative of the investment of the town of Fairfield for this program, both for those who are directly served, as well as their family members who can continue working in the community and contributing to the town's economy. So we welcome visitors anytime, and there's full information about the program on the website, and thank you for the opportunity. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
Well, just to add on to that, one, I've had a chance to visit the facility, and you all do a great job there when you're looking at, talking about taking care of our seniors and taking care of those in need. That is just a phenomenal facility that you've put together and providing a top-quality environment.
Great.
So people feel respected and feel appreciated when they come there.
Great.
You also pointed out, I think, a couple of things here. One, this was a function that was run by the town or thereabouts at one point, and you all stepped in the breach when, I believe our other partner went away, and we needed help. We needed to find a place for that. So I want to thank you for stepping up on that.
Okay.
I also want to point out that the facility that was being used has now been repurposed, and that's where Sullivan McKinney Housing is, and that's where the Pilot House runs their program. So not only have you taken care of our residents in what you're doing, you've also provided, freed up the space so we can use that space to take care of even more residents in town, and you've provided a great facility for them to participate in your program. So thank you very much on that.
Great. Well, thank you for your support.
Kristen, did you have any thoughts?
Yes, I would love to add. Thank you so much for being here and sharing the information with everyone, because as I said to actually Carolyn from Sullivan McKinney, I think that you are also a hidden gem, that there are many people who don't know that you're there. And what struck me is that you provide services not only to our seniors and those in need, but to working families, and a lot of those moms, women who are caregivers who are doing that, and dads as well who need to get out and work. And it struck me as well that you open your door to the members of the community who are not necessarily tied directly to those receiving the daily service, and that's another tremendous asset. So thank you for that partnership.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, all of you.
All right. Thank you again.
Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have an update from Mr. Andy Koch, former Fairfield teacher, on Gustav Whitehead and the Fairfield being first in flight. Now, Mr. Koch, please come up. I think that it might make sense for me to read the proclamation first.
Oh, okay.
And then give it to you to give us some more background on that, if that's okay with you.
I'll do that. Thank you.
All right. I have to ask Mr. Koch very carefully. He was my science teacher when I was in high school. And from the town of Fairfield, a proclamation. Whereas, the town of Fairfield proudly honors and recognizes the 113th anniversary of former, of Gustav Whitehead's historic flight in Fairfield, which occurred on August 14th, 1901. And whereas, Whitehead's first in flight in Fairfield took place prior to the 1903 flight of the Wright Brothers in Kitty Hawk in that state to the south. Whitehead literally drove his plane, the Condor, from Bridgeport to Fairfield to make his first flight, which successfully landed in the area on what is now Jennings Beach. And whereas, after much research, Janes All the World's Aircraft, the world's foremost authority on aviation history, proclaimed Gustav Whitehead as the first man to fly a plane, making Fairfield the location for the first motorized heavier-than-air flight. And whereas, Mr. Andy Koch, a Fairfield resident, led a team that built and flew a replica of Gustav Whitehead's airplane in 1986, proving the airworthiness of the design and refuting many Whitehead critics. And whereas, Whitehead's first in flight is exciting and very meaningful to the town of Fairfield and puts our community in the spotlight for the most important milestone in aviation history. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, declare and proclaim August 14th, 2014, as Gustav Whitehead Day throughout the town. So Andy, thank you for helping us get there. Thank you for proving that this plane was flyable and the engineering aspects worked. August 14th is next week, but this was the closest Board of Selectment meeting we had, so we wanted to read the proclamation here. I'm going to turn it over to you and give us a little bit more background on Whitehead, the flight, and what we have coming.
Thank you, Mike. Kristen. Yes, August 14th, 1901, Gustav Whitehead flew a plane that looks like that. It had a 36-foot wingspan, however, and I will have that plane, a replica of that plane, on Sherman Green all day on August 14th. It's a Thursday, and I'll have it right there so everybody can see it as a drive-by Fairfield Center. Gustav Whitehead's airplane will be right there. This is a small model, a 1/8 scale model of the plane. You might like to take a look at that. It was really like a little model airplane. It was made of wood and bamboo. The wings were made of silk, and he had a really interesting engine that burned acetylene. It was a modified steam engine, and it's a really interesting craft. I think you'll all get a chance to look at it on the 14th, and I hope I see some of you there. As Mike said, Janes All the World's Aircraft has accepted Whitehead as the first to fly, and so Fairfield is now the equivalent of Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. And we should recognize Whitehead. And I think Mike is going to mention a committee that we're going to have to get a suitable monument for Gustav Whitehead, perhaps down in Jennings Beach, I hope. And let's see if there's anything else. One thing that new that's happened, a researcher from Australia, a guy named John Brown, is talking to a film company, and they're going to make a documentary movie on Gustav Whitehead. When that comes out, it will be sent all over, and I think that will go a long way to convince other people that Gustav Whitehead actually did fly. We do have a conflict with North Carolina and with the Smithsonian Institute, because they have a contract with the Wright Brothers that forbids the Smithsonian from saying anyone ever flew before the Wright Brothers, or they lose the Wright Brothers airplane, and that's their number-one artifact. I'm sure they don't want to give that up. So we have a little problem trying to convince them that Whitehead flew first. Let's see if there's anything else I want to mention. On August 16th and 17th, it's the weekend following August 14th, I will be flying my ultralight airplane along with some friends of mine, and we will cover the area where Gustav Whitehead flew. We'll fly over Jennings Beach, and we'll fly from Captain's Cove Seaport and from Seaside Park and buzz around all day long. So maybe if you're at the beach, you'll see us flying around trying to celebrate the flight of Gustav Whitehead. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. As long as Mr. Koch is up here, I want to, we'll take the next item kind of within this. I want to take this opportunity to introduce both Mr. Koch, who I've asked to chair our First in Flight Committee. He'll be working with a number of people, and we'll have them come back before us and introduce them at that time. But the charge of the committee is to look at the best way for Fairfield to promote and publicize Gustav Whitehead and the first in flight here in town. And second, because this is more of a regional opportunity, the, as much as the first flight took here in Fairfield, Gustav Whitehead flew in Bridgeport, and he flew at Stratford. And he lived in Bridgeport and designed and built the plane in Bridgeport that he flew. So we're looking at this as a region. I'm working with both Mayor Finch and Mayor Harkins, and we're talking about creating a Whitehead Trail, a series of milestones or markers to help promote Whitehead, help promote the region, help promote tourism, and help our local economy. And we think we can do that better by working together and bringing everybody into this. So we're very excited about this. I'm thrilled that Andy has stepped up to take the lead in putting this together. And on August 14th, on Sherman Green.
That's right.
The full-size replica of the Condor that Gustav Whitehead flew will be at, on display. So we welcome everybody to come to downtown and learn more about this very important milestone in Fairfield's history. In this, our 375th year, we are also honoring our 113th year of being first in flight.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Any comments, Kristen?
Yes, I would like to add my thanks as well on behalf of the community for all that you've done to bring this to the forefront and to literally display for us so that people can have an experience visually, and I think it makes a big difference. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you. By the way, Mike wasn't a student in biology.
Oh. I want to see the.
And they say it doesn't leave your permanent record. We'll see. All right. Next up, we have a couple of items that we'd like to see moved on the agenda. I would entertain a motion to move items 12 and 13, 12 and 13, from the Director of Public Works to the next spot on our agenda.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those agenda items now stand moved. The next item we'll take is number 12, from the Director of Public Works. To hear, consider, and adopt the bond resolution entitled, "A Resolution Amending and Restating the Bond Resolution Adopted by the Representative Town Meeting on March 18th, 2013, entitled, 'A Resolution Appropriating a Sum Not to Exceed $1,037,000 for the Costs of Certain Non-Recurring Capital Projects and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation to Reallocate Bond Proceeds Between Project Categories.'" May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And I'll second. Mr. Bowman, would you step us through this?
So moved.
And given, okay. Good. And given that was a fairly complicated resolution and item to read.
I get one more. Thank you very much.
If I tried to state that more simply, that we have in our non-recurring resolution that was passed in 2013, two separate projects, and we're trying to move funds from one to the other?
That's right.
Okay.
We originally appropriated $160,000 for work at the police station for, and $171,000 for work at the firehouse. Now, we took a look at those two projects and tried to get some more funds for United Illuminating Energy Opportunity Program, and we're successful in both projects. We greatly expanded the program to deal with all the problems we had, and at the end result was we needed $83,000 more for the police, $83,000 less for the fire department, basically, so that's for the transfer in between. But to look at exactly what we're doing here, you can see this. You know, there's the source of funds and, you know, what we're doing. But the main thing is, the police department has many problems. You know, there's a missing rooftop unit. There's three different control systems for the HVAC, each fighting each other. The interior VAV system cools only. The perimeter baseboard then provides heating and cooling, but it's often heating at the same time as the other system is cooling, driving people crazy. There are no zone controls. The VA system is noisy and malfunctioning as noisy as it can be. The result, there's portable heaters under desks, there's portable air conditioning units in hallways, none of which, you know, do well for efficiency. There's no economizers to be able to use the outside air to cool rather than use electricity to cool the air. And there's no ability to remotely monitor anything. The result is employee discomfort year-round and very high electric and natural gas usage for HVAC. So if you look at the next page, it talks about the original proposal for the police station and what we've done to increase that. You know, the original proposal had a rooftop added. Now, we've also added a rooftop, but CO2 sensors, the economizers, and a retrofit of the baseboard system. The original proposal was taking a look at the old VAV boxes and replaced them. We realized they're totally malfunctioning and replaced them with VVT boxes, occupancy sensors. You're going to ask what it means. I can't remember. All I know is that the VAV system never fully closes. The dampers are partially open, partially closed. It's always, even when you're trying to cool, if it's on the heat mode, and your office is hot, it's still going to get air in. The VVT thing completely shuts off. Once it reaches the temperature it needs, the valve in that room will close. The other ones will stay open until it gets the temperature it wants. If you're demanding heat in one part of the building where it's facing the sun, it'll give you heat. Five minutes later, the other part of the building wants cool, it'll give cool just to that part of the building, which has 65 separate zones in there, so there'll be 65 choices that can be made. Then we're, that was not in the original proposal, as I was. They have rooftop controls. We're providing rooftop controls also, but the boiler, the FEDs, and all their HVAC equipment in the building will be under controls. In addition, we put an energy dashboard in, which the original proposal does not have. The energy dashboard is a system that allows the management of the building and us in Public Works to look at that building and see how every single piece of HVAC equipment, boilers, rooftops, the vents in every room is working and not working, and be able to diagnose problems, you know, ahead of time to do predictive maintenance. So it's a tremendously powerful tool. Design costs are a little more because it's a bigger project, and it shows you how we got from 160 to 472,000 dollars on that project. The fire department's problems are similar but not as bad. It's a 1954 rooftop air handling unit. The original one's in place. It only cools the second floor. Then the first order to get cooling, you have window air conditioners, again, not very efficient. The boiler of the building, the original boiler from 1954. The VAV, again, distribution systems from 1954. There are no controls, no zones, no economizers, and highly inefficient, both electric and HVAC. So the original proposal was 48,000 for one rooftop. The new proposal is 96,000 for two rooftop units. It will both heat and air conditioning, CO2 sensors, and economizers bring the outside air in. The old proposal was put a new boiler in. This proposal will provide all the heat and air conditioning from the roof. The boiler will be eliminated. New ductwork, newer VAV, again, being able to shut off, create zones, radiator modifications for perimeter heating. That was not in the original proposal. Again, they had controls for the rooftop, but we're having controls for the. Again, they had controls for the rooftop, but we're having controls for the rooftops throughout the building, so there'll be 28 different heating and air conditioning zones, similar to the police department where different zones can call for heat and air conditioning within minutes of each other and get that as those valves shut down. Design's about the same, but the net cost is down $30,000 for this project. So what are we getting in the different proposal comparisons? You know, we get individual room controls and the new proposal is not in the original. We're getting heating and air conditioning by zone in the new proposal, none in the original. Economizers in the new, none in the original. CO2 monitors in the new, none in the original. Total control of all HVAC equipment in new, none in the original. Occupant sensors in the new, none in the original. The only, the perimeter heating has been repaired in both proposals. The energy dashboard for the police station only. The fire department isn't big enough at this point to have it required. That wasn't proposed in the original. The new type of valves are completely closed rather than partially closed. Yes, that wasn't in the original. The engineering study was in, we did a full engineering study for the police department, which was not proposed in the original. And the engineering study, to take a look at how that building worked, we spent 15 years trying to fix that building, not fully rationalizing how it worked. But looked at the original building plans and found three different control systems, things that we thought were controlled weren't controlled. Wires disconnected. So all this is being corrected. That's why we could never make it work right. So we've done that. So we think, and to tie into the microgrid also, by the way, which wasn't in the original proposal. So that's how we got to where we are from where we were.
If I can kind of take that and just kind of run by my takeaways on that. One is that both buildings are getting out of years. We've had a number of system improvements-
Yeah.
-kind of piecemeal over time, but not a comprehensive look at what it takes. And consequently, today, it's not working. What this does, our last proposal went back to address some of that. But what you've been able to work out here is to take the money that we were proposing, increase that significantly, but get that paid for by UI loans and grants.
That's correct.
So basically, you're taking the additional money, using it to come up with a more comprehensive solution. And in the final analysis, it nets out in total to roughly zero, but what we're really here to do is transfer 80 grand, $80,000 from one project to the other-
Right.
-to kind of net them out to zero.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Kristen?
Well, I know I've said this before, but I think you're our energy superhero. And I think I might have to get you a cape, Mr. Bowman, because it's truly amazing what you do in terms of leveraging those resources. And when I'm thinking about these buildings, besides the energy efficiency and the cost savings and the improvements to the buildings, the people who work in them, I think, are going to be a lot happier with the conditions because it's awful when you're feeling uncomfortable, weather too hot or too cold. So I'm really-
I think if the police department is happy, they'll run us out of town at this point. They're trying so many things, it just didn't work.
Well, it's, and I'm looking at that to build on what you just said, is still looking at the productivity increase, especially with the police officers. No disrespect to the fire, but when they're inside, they're coming in with vests, with heavier equipment on that they can take off at times, but the uniforms are somewhat not always the most sensitive to the environment around them. So I think that that's a big issue there. I think on the other side, certainly with fire in the same way, in a sense, that the uniform firefighters are up in the offices, that's going to help in terms of making them more productive as we go through that. So they'll not only be happier, but I think the more productive piece appeals to everybody also, including the firefighters and the officers themselves.
And healthier. I mean, I think that if I'm correct, the dorm, all the spaces then will be, will be better in both places. So the one question I had for you actually was with respect to this, the grant funding and in terms of where things stand with that. I know you're always looking for other opportunities, so is this kind of the end of another chapter or is it still an ongoing story in terms of the UI?
Oh, it'll be ongoing for years. We have half a dozen projects in mind and they have the money, so we'll be back again.
Okay. Which is what I've heard before, but just wanted to confirm and clarify. So thank you. This is a tremendous project and I'm really, I'm glad that you are spearheading this.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman, thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess you can stay where you are because item 13 is up next. This is also from the Director of Public Works. "To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to accept and expend a grant from the Connecticut Department of Transportation under the 2014 Connecticut Clean Fuel Program in an amount not to exceed $47,050 to be used towards the purchase of three compressed natural gas vehicles, covering the cost difference between alternate and conventional fuel vehicles. Further resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to execute, on the behalf of the town of Fairfield, any and all necessary documents to secure such grant." May I have a motion to accept?
Some moved.
And I'll second that. Mr. Bowman, back to you.
Again, this is a continuum program we've done since 1997, adding to our fleet of natural gas vehicles. Two of these are replacements of existing vehicles. One is a new vehicle. All were approved in the budget. With the budget money we took and applied for the grant to get the incremental cost, and we're successful in that. And I think we're going to see more and more in the future with hybrids and things like that. There's like 24 kinds of hybrids on the market today. Well, three years ago, it was like three. So it'll be, will all be natural gas vehicles in the future.
All right. And we have a natural gas, compressed natural gas filling facility at the DPW garage?
Right. We did, we had a $300,000 grant to upgrade it for the extra vehicles for purchase.
Any comments?
In terms of our fleet at the senior center, how many, where do we stand with how many are natural gas?
There's only two are natural gas. Next year, we're looking to get a third one, a replacement vehicle. We were looking at one or two, we're looking at a smaller vehicle, Transit Connect vehicle, which would be good to transport the people to the vet's hospital where they only need three or four people. And it also is wheelchair-equipped. And the wheelchair-equipped is, the way they do it, it makes the people very happy. They sit in the front next to the driver looking out. The people who have used their wheelchair are amazed because usually they're stuck in the back, they can't see anything. Here, they're right up in front and they like it very much. So that's what we're looking to get next year if the town approves the funds for the basic one.
Thank you.
Good. Any further comments? Any comments from the public? All right. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the capes should be green.
All right. Back to-
I have to have something here.
-the agenda item. And we are, let's see. So the next item up, we're back to item 10. And this is from the fire chief, "To hear a report and update on the Penfield Regional Fire School." Assistant Chief, would you introduce us?
Yes. Assistant Chief Chris Tracy, Chief of Training for the Fire Department and Training Director of the Fairfield Regional Fire School. I will give you a brief background on where we've come and go through the MOU that got us where we are, and then I'll take you forward from there on the fire school.
And Assistant Chief, I might, let me just set the stage. This is a project and the memo of understanding came before the Board of Selectmen back in April of 2011. Because it's going back through our other boards at this point, I asked the Assistant Chief to come here and give us an update, since you weren't on the Board of Selectmen then, I wasn't, and Selectman Kylie wasn't on the board at that point. Though Selectman Kylie and I were both on the Board of Finance at that point. But I thought, since it didn't get to the Board of Finance, then we approved part of another project related to this. But since we hadn't heard this before, I thought it made sense for us to get the update. So we were updated going through this. So-
Well, I finally have, I finally have something to update you with, and I think that was why we are in the month that we are and going through the presentations that we are. To just bring you up to where we are and where we've come. Originally, the site was a Nike missile site built in 1950 by the Department of Defense as the radar tower section of the silos that were over on, off South Pine Creek. And as a result, the Fire Department found this large acquisition very useful under Captain Joseph Elias, who was my predecessor and the first training director at the fire school and Chief of Training, or Captain of Training at the time. So that was in 65. But the buildings that were built in 1950 had a 20-year lifespan, according to their engineers. We are now in their third life and fading fast. So the General Assembly in 72 found reason to make this one of, a group of eight regional fire schools. We were serving throughout the region, a number of fire departments, and it served also the mutual aid responsibilities that we share and continue to share. So they found funds to operate these schools through grants run through the Connecticut State Firefighters Association, and they continue through today. Obviously, they've been raised. In 86, under, I believe then Captain Harry Ackley, who's still in town, we had a training tower and burn building erected there. Again, that was state-of-the-art for 86, and we were very grateful. And then when Captain Elias passed in 1994, the entire facility was dedicated to him and is now the Captain Joseph S. Elias Training Center, also known as the Fairfield Regional Fire School. In 99, that group of regional schools regularly met monthly and found a genuine problem in that many of them were condemned because of the heavy use that a fire building gets. And they were actually coming to Fairfield in those few schools that remained. And that was taxing our remaining schools to the extent that they were going to be in pretty sorry shape very soon. An appeal was made to the General Assembly, and actually I have a memo from Mr. Carl Dickman, who served as our representative at the time and advocated on its behalf. And so in 2002, a study was done, a facility study, by DeBeau's associates at the time, and they remain in the process. In fact, they're now responsible for the design of the burn buildings for many of the projects that are moving forward. But in 2002, there's photographic evidence of the decay over those 52 years since the buildings were built and the facilities were started. And it was recognized that those schools would need, were in some cases desperate need, of renovation and that we would need to get bonding funds and accommodate the same. Fairfield at that time was at the end of the list. We were the most viable school in 2002. And in that design process, there was a five-year plan to get all eight schools built out. So in 2007, when I took over, I would be taking on this new facility. Unfortunately, none of the schools had been built by that time. We were still in the process of working through issues at the state level and with some of the local facilities. New Haven was the first. And a model similar to ours in that they are owned and operated by the town, or the city in their case, and also serve the region. So with their experience and our needs growing, we pushed very hard through a number of different representatives up in Hartford, and we're grateful for the bipartisan, bicameral support throughout, to the extent that we got to where we were back in 2011. I'm happy to report, though, that while you weren't in these positions, I had two Board of Finance members that voted unanimously in favor of the site remediation that had to be done, and also an RTM member that also voted with that unanimous vote back in 2011. So I'm grateful for that. And unfortunately, I guess, it's taken these three years to get us to the point where we now feel that it's appropriate to bring that memo of understanding to the various bodies for their approval. Happy to report that last night, the first of those Board of Finance voted unanimously to support what was a very good investment. $100,000, give or take, of monies that Mr. White and then Mr. Michelangelo saw through to the site remediation. Will return with a $10 million bonding from the state of Connecticut to be signed out of the bond commission at the end of this month or end of next, depending on their agenda. At this time, it looks like this month. And so, we're at the MOU, which in their 12 points, provide improvements by the state at no town cost with ownership retained upon completion by the town. A commitment by the town to continue operating as a regional fire academy, which we're certainly gaining benefit from doing. Work beyond the scope of project to be covered by the town. As anyone knows, it's built anything. When there's a change order, there's an additional expense. We're working very hard and I'm grateful for the help of the Building Department, the Conservation Commission, all of my neighbors in Public Works and the water treatment facility, to go through these plans in advance to ensure that there are no change orders, and I don't anticipate any. The third-party beneficiary of all contracts, which is to say, we benefit when the Department of, Division, forgive me, of Construction Services contracts with any of the subcontractors to build these facilities, which I'll detail in a moment. The assignment of Program Director Dave Lutkowski from the Construction Services Division of the Department of Administrative Services, and myself for the town, representing throughout this process. All work to be compliant with state building codes and federal and state laws. Point seven, the town named as an additionally insured party with any certificate that DCS obtains, also noting our indemnification. Effective from the date signed by the Attorney General, which was August of 2011, through the completion of the punch list, which is to say that when the contract is signed and the bond is set for the winning bidder in September, we believe, September 8th of this year, they have 365 days to complete and another 90 days to finish any punch list items that arise. The sovereign immunity applicability to the state, essentially indemnifying both parties against one another, and the state held them harmless from negligence or willful misconduct by town agents, none of which I anticipate, given all of our town agencies that I've worked with. Finally, it's effective and binding upon approval by the Attorney General and Fire Commission, planning and zoning in its planning capacity, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen and RTM, which brings me before those bodies this month. And the site remediation that was required in item 13 was completed on June 30th in last year by Public Works Director Michelangelo. And I have documentation of all of those dates and items. So it brings us to why I'm here and what may be Mr. Bowman's next microgrid project, which is to say, we have through that process schematic design documents and a proposal, which will then be several months to ensure that it's secure, of a Fairfield Regional Fire School renovation, $10 million project. It will include 16,300 square foot administrative classroom and apparatus, three bay apparatus building. For example, when an engine is coming down for class in the middle of winter, we can't have that because the engine's out in the cold and the lines will freeze. So this will give us a place to protect our apparatus as firefighters are doing training. A 6,300 square foot Class A burn building, so the one room that we have right now to light hay and pallets in will now be, resemble more of a colonial type house, representative of a lot of what our firefighters fight when they go out. And that's critical. In addition, there will be propane car fire, pressure vessels, stove and split-flan burn props, so that as we're pushing in on a car fire, we're not putting petroleum into the air and hydrocarbons. We've got the propane that burns off and the catch basin that'll take any of our firefighting foam if we use that. It'll include a drafting pit, so if we have to draft out of river, we'd be able to draw water. It's not something we get to practice. We have to go up to Mohegan and cut through the brush to get a drafting test for our testing of the pumps. An extrication pad for vehicle extrication and an extinguisher training pad. And then, and this is key in some of those collaborations I was speaking of. Conservation has had a concern about some of the flood zones down there and where they've been doing a lot of their work. And I'm very happy to report that a large part of this project will include site balancing. So while the tower will remain and the burn building will be adjacent, the northern portion of the site will be raised up about a foot and a half, and that will raise it up above the flood plain. I can speak to Hurricane Sandy and Irene. In neither case did we see water in the building, but a good portion of the parking lot was flooded. In this case, that would remove that hazard and they'll be able to leave their work intact without any concerns. And finally, repairs to that 1986 training tower to match the new burn building with shutters and a lot of point work that needs to be done. It's gotten, gotten old. So that's where we are. I'm here with any of the information I can provide to clarify. I've got a good gantt chart of where we have to go in the coming weeks, at which point, again, come January, September 8th, there's too many dates in my head now. September 8th, I expect the Attorney General to sign off. We will then have the fall and into early winter of- We will then have the fall and into early winter of planning, permitting, review, all the preparation work that needs to go into it, so that come January, when the trucks come in, they'll be able to complete these projects by next September eighth.
Good. Assistant Chief Fraser, one, thank you for coming here today to lay this out. I know it did, I think Selectmen, McCarthy, Vay and myself has had a chance to go through firefighter one oh one in that. And as much as that was a drill, I found myself, as I was going through the buildings with the live fires going through, albeit hay, not real buildings, but reminding myself constantly, this is only a drill. This is only a drill. And I thanked, was very thankful for the guidance of the firefighter assigned to me to make sure that I got through that okay, with a much better understanding of at least part of what a firefighter here literally risks every day or at every incident that goes through, and a much better appreciation for the difficulty of the job. And we were doing it on a pleasant day with no rain, not in the cold. It was, so it very, very much a chance to walk in somebody else's shoes for at least part of a day and gain a greater appreciation of everything. And if this helps train our firefighters, both for Fairfield and surrounding towns, and improves their functioning, their performance, that only potentially saves our residents, but it also potentially saves lives of our firefighters. And I think that, to me, is very important. So I'm very supportive of what we're doing here. And again, thank you for going through. Did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. And I would echo, thank you for the thorough presentation and the materials, and I concur. Experiential learning is very powerful, and certainly that day, and we were partnered up, actually, for that experience, which was very powerful for me, a powerful lesson in terms of how important it is for life safety. And so I'm very proud and grateful that we can have this facility here in Fairfield. And I've been down there on other occasions and seen some of the regional training going on, and the firefighters from the various towns, you know, with their towns on their, you know, on their backs, and it's an asset, a true asset. So, thank you. I do have questions, some questions for you. So just going through, and obviously, as the First Selectmen said, we weren't, we were not on the Board of Selectmen at the time, and just wondered if you could clarify a few pieces of the memorandum, which I know is not going to be changed or altered. I will preface my remarks with that. I understand that that's not happening here, but just, first question is, in section six point two, the town and its land use regulations are preempted. You mentioned something about conservation, and I just want to make sure, in terms of land use and conservation and environmental issues, everything's been checked out across the board at all levels, and that that piece of it is addressed?
Well, it is in the coastal zone. It has federal regulations as well. Until we had the absolute plans, which I've literally just received in the last weeks, I wasn't able to go through them. But I went through briefly with Mr. Stanky and look forward to going through with his staff, and upon his departure, his successor, because I really rely on their wisdom on those points. I'll mention this. One of our members of that department was cited when this company made their presentation as a great asset to the town, and the fact that he had worked with them in prior construction and looked forward to it again. I anticipate a very good relationship with those agencies, whether or not they serve within their normal permitting capacity. That said, we currently operate on, again, an old Mikey missile site. The runoff and the drainage and the, well, and the energy loss, but everything about the site is not optimal for conservation in any way. And the fact that the site balancing and the drainage capture and the foam training capture sites, the apparatus bay capture and filtration sites, the leads silver that this company is rising up to, they didn't need to, they were able to just go to a high energy efficiency, they're raising the bar. I know that what we'll be coming out of this with, and this was early in our conversation with the departments, will serve conservation at every level. We have discussed some of the anticipated plans that Conservation and Public Works have with Mr. Michelangelo and Mr. Stanky, and I look forward to keeping them in this process so that we're not doing something that has to get undone or that undoes someone's future planning. But I believe that this will not only far improve the conservation component, but it will, again, meet the conservation and building needs, again, speaking with Mr. Conley about the building code, and him looking at what plans we had and being very comfortable with that, having worked with him for a decade and a half in fire marshal details. I look forward to their input and expect that it will meet any of their concerns.
Great. Thank you. It strikes me, this is a comment before I go to my other, I have a few questions, if I may, that we have some folks here in the room who have been working in this coastal construction situation. We'll be talking to them in a little bit, but just that, you know, sharing of information and experience whenever possible. I know this is the state and we're the town, but that would be great. The section, section eight is my next question. Perhaps this is more of a comment, again, recognizing we won't be changing this, but just noticing that last sentence of that section where DPW, not our DPW, but at the state, reserves the right to suspend or terminate the project at any time, for any reason or for no reason. And in other words, we're just clear that they really have control of this project. The state is really in control of how things move forward, whether there's a funding issue or other issues that are part of this.
I can assure you one thing, which is that once the Bond Commission has released the funding, that's not any longer a piece of this. And the contract commitment was for that amount that the Bond Commission will be releasing. So what the last seven of my years have been committing to is getting those bonding authorizations or getting those bonds set by the General Assembly, and I'm grateful to all of our representatives for that and Senator. But this is a function of the state's primacy, and they're clearly establishing it in that. That said, they're already into this project, probably almost a million dollars. I don't anticipate them to step back.
Yes, and they're committed, and I can vouch for your work. I did see you once in Hartford doing that very work, actually. So, next question is in terms of section eleven point two and the going through the various town bodies. So just so that, you know, the public is aware, I know you were at the Board of Finance already, and so is your intent to then go before all of the rest of the bodies in this list this month?
Absolutely. The approvals are being sought by each of them, so that every I is dotted and T is crossed. Again, as I said to Mr., I'm not even sure whose question it was now, I beg your pardon. Last night, one of the questions had to do with why this was coming out. Oh, Mr. Walsh, who had been on the Board of Selectmen when this was signed, and it had to do with why we're going through the process at this stage. Candidly, we had nothing more than this small document up until very recently. And to go to those bodies and try to explain what we were looking for without that material wouldn't have been, frankly, good representation. We now have solid documentation and a good faith understanding of when this bond is coming through that I can speak to. Who knows what the bond would have been three years ago? Who knows if it had been delayed, what it would be three years from now? But I do know what I have now, and that's the reason that we are going before the subcommittee for the RTM, and then the RTM on the twenty-fifth, planning and zoning on the twenty-sixth, and the Fire Commission at their next meeting. I believe it'll be the second week in September.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that explanation. Then section eleven point three. If I'm reading this correctly, it essentially says, and correct me if I'm wrong, that modifications to the agreement can be made without going back through all of the approvals. Am I, am I reading that correctly? In other words, that we've had all these bodies approve this memorandum, and then if there are modifications that need to be made to the agreement, it would be with DPW and the town? Maybe this one's more to the First Selectmen.
Yeah, I think that, one, it's, that's somewhat of a legal opinion, and I don't think the Assistant Chief should be on the spot to provide a legal opinion in that sense.
Absolutely not.
As I read this, it says it has to be, any modification in writing has to be approved by DPW and approved by the town. The body that would approve this by the town is actually the Board of Selectmen. From a standpoint of the town's approval, this is the only board that it has to go to. The paragraph above, eleven point two, that you pointed out, is the reason it's going to all the other boards.
Mm-hmm.
So if there's a modification, it would certainly come back before us and the state, and we would sort that out together. We would certainly publicize it to the other boards, and I suspect that the Fire Commission would certainly would have their presentation. But from the town's approval standpoint, since this is a contract involving no money, it would be before this board.
Okay. Thank you for that. Though you do have many talents, I do not expect you to be a lawyer, and that's actually one of my questions is, I assume that when this went through previously, that the appropriate legal review was done?
I can speak to the review process, if you'd like, just very briefly. And just as that document speaks to the town attorney and the Attorney General having to sign, at that time, our town attorney and Assistant Town Attorney did sign off, and at this time, if there were a change, the attorney for the town today, who has reviewed this document, would also have to sign off on that. So, yes, it's had substantial legal review.
Yes. I, I'm, I know that if Selectmen Kylie were here, he would probably be asking that question, so, okay. And I think, actually, that's it. You answered my other questions within some of your other answers, so thank you very much.
All right. Assistant Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I look forward to inviting you all to the groundbreaking and then to the ribbon cutting.
We look forward to it.
Yes, thank you.
Let me find that moment, that next environmental project.
All right. Next up, from the Penfield Building Committee, to hear an update from the Penfield Building Committee. Mr. Bradley?
And Mr. Bradley, if I might just set the stage a bit for your presence here. We have a report and update on the Penfield Building Committee coming before us. We're not voting on this today. However, looking forward to our next meeting, this will be a proposal and resolution on our agenda at that meeting. The goal of today was literally to provide the Board of Selectmen, to the extent that anybody else is listening or watching, an update on the Penfield Building Project, where it is, what the resolution is, so that we can help all of our community understand what's being recommended, and give everybody as much opportunity to hear about it, understand it, and as it moves through the process, it will go from the Board of Selectmen, if it passes our board at the end of this month, to the Board of Finance the first week in September, and if it passes then, on to the RTM in September. There will also be an update to the RTM, similar to this one, in August, with the same goal in mind, to give the RTM members a chance to understand what the proposal is, what was considered, what the process that went through. So it's not putting anybody in a situation with something this complex that impacts so much of our community of trying to both hear a presentation and vote in the same evening. We're trying to spread that out, to make sure that at the end of this, we make the right decision for our entire community. So with that as the lead-in, Mr. Bradley, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just want to hand this to you. It's just a copy of mine. Jim Bradley, one eleven Cherry Lane, Fairfield, and Chairman of the Penfield Building Committee. I'm going to just read a few introductory remarks, and we'll get to presenting the documents, the drawings. Thank you for including the Penfield Project Update on today's Board of Selectmen meeting agenda. I'm here this afternoon representing the Penfield Building Committee and have invited Kevin Chamberlain to join me. Kevin's sitting right here. DiStefano and Chamberlain are the structural engineers and the architect for the proposed repair and reconstruction project. The committee has already provided an eight-page project status briefing that I believe was distributed prior to this meeting. In addition, we will present drawings that represent the existing site conditions, describe the proposed repair and reconstruction project. Please note that the briefing presentation today does not represent our final report, and this caveat, together with qualifications regarding the project cost and scope, are included in the briefing document. The committee continues to work through the final program, design details, and cost issues related to both the building and the surrounding site. During our previous briefing before the Board of Selectmen, I presented and referred to our process and approach in fact-finding research based on in-person presentations and open and informative discussion at each of our meetings. We set up an information gathering and review model, assumed a project schedule that could deliver the project for the summer of two thousand and fifteen, encouraged public comment, and confirmed our commitment to transparency and communication. At the risk of some information contained in the previous briefing, of repeating some information contained in the previous briefing, I would like to review the key committee resources. We obviously had access, along with our engineer and architect, to the Phase One and Phase Two original project drawings, including the foundation design assumptions. We had access to inspection reports and supporting documentation correspondence that was related to the damage caused by both Irene and Sandy, as provided by the investigating structural engineer, J.M. Albain Engineering. We also had, we also had presentations before the committee which included J.M. Albain Engineering, the structural engineer responsible for investigating and assessing and qualifying the storm damage. We also heard from Robertch Associates Coastal Engineers, who were working at the time for J.M. Albain, regarding flooding impacts, structural and foundation design considerations, and FEMA flood zone requirements. We heard from Heller and Johnson Geotechnical Engineers regarding site geology, site conditions, resulting soil test borings completed at the site, and the impact of coastal storms. We heard from the town DPW on more than one occasion regarding the project history, Irene and storm, Storm Irene and Sandy timelines and damage, remedial storm protection actions, and the timber bulkhead design assumptions. The town of Fairfield Engineering Department provided us with a project history and the bulkhead design and construction. We heard from Flood and Erosion Board regarding historical neighborhood flooding and drainage issues, impact of the pavilion site elevations regarding flooding, and coastal flood protection issues. We heard from Tom Stanky at Town Conservation regarding coastal and environmental issues, geological history of the beach and marsh areas, history of the beach sand accretion and loss, offshore topography, and historical loss, net loss of beach sand resources. Obviously, we communicated and liaised on with Parks and Recreation, and including the facility program, the pluses and minuses regarding the existing design, seasonal use, locker use, and demand, facility economics. We met with Jim Went at Town P&amp;Z regarding FEMA flood zone requirements, the new two thousand and thirteen V-zone requirements, the appraised value, and fifty percent threshold cost determination, the FEMA design criteria, zoning requirements regarding new construction. Information provided during the engineer and architect and construction manager proposal, review, and selection process was interesting. We asked each of the candidates, both from the engineering side and construction management side, when they came to propose their services to the committee, we asked them to present their ideas. We provided them with information. So it was interesting to get a perspective from a lot of different people in the industry about what our problems were and how we might be able to solve them. We also had access, obviously, to the open public forum of August two thousand and thirteen, and the storm damage engineering estimates prepared by Wakely Associates, and then again by Romano Construction, and then a third resource, Sagata Construction Group, all as part of the insurance claim evaluation. We liaised on with the town risk manager regarding the insurance settlement, and liaised on with the town Department of Public Works regarding FEMA grant and CDGB applications. So what happened? Briefly, as far as the pavilion is concerned, as far as Penfield is concerned, the building was impacted by both Irene and Sandy. High tide, high tidal and wind-driven water inundated the site and flooded the neighborhood. We should note and reemphasize that the floodwaters impacting the neighborhood came from many directions. The sand behind the existing timber bulkhead under the pavilion building became unstable due to liquefaction, the combination of water and sand where sand becomes unstable. I mentioned to- I mentioned during one of the public question and answer periods, it's almost like when you stand on the beach, when the wave comes in around you and your feet start to sink, that's a very minor explanation of liquefaction. The beach in front of the bulkhead in the Long Island Soundside became eroded due to the storm tides and waves, and was also subject to liquefaction. The effectiveness of the bulkhead was compromised by storm-driven beach erosion and exacerbated by an opening below the beach grade at or near the bottom of the bulkhead. The receding floodwaters and sand exited through the bulkhead opening, causing major scour and loss of sand around and below the foundation footings, seriously impacting the building and causing the building to settle and cause structural damage, and resulting structural damage. The damage to Penfield can be repaired, as we mentioned in our briefing document, both the inspecting engineer who did the forensic research and our new project engineer agree that this is a building that can be saved. The damage to Penfield can be separated into three basic areas, the foundations, the structural floor framing, the structural building framing, and building damage, the decks, ramps, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and interior cosmetic damage. Liquification and scour and erosion under the building exacerbated soil conditions and foundation bearing capacity that existed or was assumed to exist prior to Irene and Sandy. The committee considered repair options beginning with those proposed by the original structural engineer, J.M. Albain, responsible for damage reports, and other options and variations brought forward by our project engineer, our construction manager, the coastal and geotechnical engineers that we heard from, and other consultants, the committee, the town, and representatives of public, so we had a lot of input, and we had a lot of options, and we had a lot of variations on options. So we had to establish key factors that the committee should consider as we debated and considered the options, and I think they're important to review quickly here. The extent of building and foundation damage and the feasibility of repairs, the cause of the damage and the contributing factors, coastal storm impacts including Irene, Sandy, and future storms, coastal storm protection, design and options, existing soil conditions and footing depths, foundation designs and soil capacity, soil bearing quality and capacity assumptions, the whole soil and foundation issues became very important for us and the engineers, existing timber bulkhead location and past and future performance, facility site impact on past and future neighborhood flooding, a sensitive issue, beach accretion and loss, storm-related and historical, building height and mass impacting the surrounding neighborhood, original and new FEMA flood zone requirements, and obviously, cost and schedule, and construction methods and market capabilities. We didn't want to get involved in an option that was difficult or overly expensive to build because there weren't enough competitive trades to do the work that we anticipated. And then we thought through the existing use and future use and value of the facility, and obviously, we heard we had to consider the insurance claims and other cost recovery issues because how much money was available obviously weighed on our deliberations. So, and we, above and beyond all of these considerations, thought carefully about the Fairfield taxpayer and the Fairfield citizens and the use of this building. So we have had 17 meetings, I think, that number appears in our briefing, and we are now at the point where the committee has voted on one option with carrying a second option for reference and more detailed study. So what I'd like to do at this moment is confirm with you that we are moving forward on Option Seven, which is going to be described by Kevin Chamberlain, and that we have presented that option to the Parks and Recreation Commission on July 16th, I believe, and we received their approval after a detailed presentation and deliberation on their part. And that was important to us because we certainly didn't want to propose something that was unacceptable to the user group, Parks and Rec. So, and I did want to mention the committee continues to look at issues related to the feasibility of Option One as representing our low-cost benchmark option. There are some issues there related to FEMA funding, and there's obviously an issue related to whether or not it's a sound engineering solution, given the recent knowledge we have of the conditions on site. So Kevin, what I'd like to have you do, if you will, is just briefly go through the options, and then give us a little background on Option Seven.
Sure. Yes, good evening, Kevin Chamberlain with DeStefano and Chamberlain, structural engineers and architects here in Fairfield. Committee brought us on board several months ago to kind of take over where their investigative engineer had left off, and come at this from the standpoint of, okay, where do we go from here, how do we repair the facility and get it back in service? In addition to the information that was already assembled by the other investigative engineer, we looked at several things from a fresh perspective. One is the soil conditions under the building, as Chairman Bradley had mentioned. In addition to approximately 12 test borings that were drilled around the perimeter of the building, we did five additional borings actually inside the building and on the decks surrounding the building, to get a very accurate picture of the conditions that were under the building, which may have contributed to the foundation failure. What we discovered is that we have a fairly consistent condition of loose sand that's directly under the building, the beach sand, as the chairman mentioned, and then a layer of peat, which is a organic decomposed soil material, which is a very common thing to find on a barrier beach such as Fairfield Beach, where over time, the sands have been piled up on top of the lower tide level that used to exist on the shore area. Those layers are problematic, the loose sands are prone to liquefy and are also very easily eroded and scoured from wave action. And what we found is that during Irene and Sandy, we had that type of damage occurring below the building, where the sands were washed away, footings were undermined, and the building settled. It was to a lesser degree during Irene, it was obviously a significant damage from Sandy. Approximately a third of the building footprint was undermined and settled. And that also caused damage to the building above, to the beams that support the building, and to some of the interior spaces and finishes and trim on the building. So we, from that drew a conclusion that in addition to the coastal storm perspective and the flood zone perspective of what the building has to deal with, that also from a soil condition standpoint, we need a pile foundation under the building, that, you know, it was our view that if we just simply go back in with more footings just like what was there, we will have the same failure as happened before. So that was our recommendation to the committee. Obviously, there were a lot of options that were considered and discussed by the committee, but for those reasons, that was how we arrived at the selected option, which we're calling Option Seven. So if I could, I'll take you through what that's going to entail. Just bear with me a moment while I get the board set up here.
I'll take a tack.
Thank you for bearing with me. Next time, I'm going to use PowerPoint.
Not as much fun to watch you set up when you're talking.
I guess not. Okay. This is a plan of the existing building, and as you're probably familiar with, there's the west end of the building, which was Phase Two, where the gathering room is located, the main entertainment space, concession stands, kitchen, men's and women's rooms, lifeguard, first aid, and the main entrance lobby area. There's also some outdoor deck areas that are used as space for parties that are using the gathering room, and some deck areas that are associated with the concession stand. Phase One, which is also known as the east wing, is basically just a big locker space. There are, I believe, over 200 lockers that people rent out, there's a men's and women's room with showers, and a couple of additional handicap-accessible bathrooms accessed from the exterior deck. We looked at several aspects of the east wing that made us think that it was not economically viable to try and lift and move that part of the building with the rest of the building. One is that it's a very minimal construction, there's not a lot of finishes or things in there that are very expensive to replicate, there's basically just bare framing that's exposed to view, the floor is just a single thickness of decking as we have on the outside of the building, there's really not much in the way of mechanical or electrical systems that would need to be dealt with. So we looked at several options that involved either tearing this part of the building down and replacing it, or tearing it down and replacing it with something smaller. That generated a discussion about the program of the building and what is really needed there at this site. We had input from the Parks Director, Jerry Lombardo, we also appeared before the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss the change in the program of the building, and what we came up with was a downscaled east wing, so that we would take the west side of the building, we would move it into the parking lot temporarily, drive piles to support new foundations to resupport the building, move the building, the west half of the building back into position, and then build a smaller east wing to replace the larger east wing that's currently there. That led us to a design that we presented to the committee, which we feel is a little bit more on scale for the site. If I can take you through that right now. This wall here is currently what divides the locker portion of the building from the other portions of the building, so this is where we would demolish everything to the east. We would construct two changing rooms and bathrooms that would have toilets, sinks, showers, and changing space, men's and women's. There would be a small mechanical room here for the hot water facilities that are currently in the building. We would have an exterior deck that would wrap around that east wing, and also interconnect around the front and the rear with the covered decks that are around the rest of the building, so that there's a continuous pedestrian flow around the building. One of the aspects of the new design being elevated above the flood elevation is that it's much higher out of the ground, so the handicap access is different. We need more ramps to get up to the first floor from the lowest level, which is the parking lot level, and also out to the beach. So we had input from the committee and also from the Parks Director that we need to maintain the two avenues of approach from the parking lot, both the west wing and the east wing. At one point, we looked at, well, what if we just provide a ramp down here, but the feeling was that this thing is so long that there really wants to be two points of access. So what we're proposing is a two-tiered system of ramps at the east end of the facility that get you both up to the sand level around the building, and from there, up to the first floor, as well as maintaining the existing ramp at the west end of the building, which would then be tied into the newer, higher floor level near the front entrance. We also felt that there needed to be a softening of the building so that when you're standing there looking at it in the parking lot, you're not just looking at this building that's eight feet up in the air with nothing around it. We are also concerned about trying to better buffer the area between the beach and the parking lot, there've been some concerns expressed by the Flood and Erosion Control Board about having this area be a better barrier against coastal storms. So what we proposed is that we would have an area under the building that would be built up to the higher, a higher elevation than it currently is, it'd be approximately elevation 11 to 11 and a half, which is two to three feet higher than where it is currently. This would do a couple of things, this would enable us to have this flattened tabletop, as we like to call it, under and around the building, so that when you're ramping up to the first floor, you're not just going continuously from the parking lot up to the building, you're coming up to an intermediate level and then going up again. It's also a little more appealing from the standpoint of stairs. You walk up to this intermediate level around the building and then walk up to the first floor. Another aspect of the design we considered, both from a functionality standpoint and a cost-saving standpoint, was currently, there's a significant amount of structured deck around the building. Those structured decks are, they're more expensive to move with the building and move back, as well as repair the damage that was caused, than they would be if we just built them new. We also felt that there needed to be a transitional level of decking between the beach and the building, and we wanted to do it in a more cost-effective way. So our solution was to scale back the structured decks to just the decks that are under the roof overhang of the building, which is this green color, and then to provide decks down at the sand level around the building that are basically boardwalk construction, laid in the sand, and not requiring a lot of expensive foundations. So what that gave us was a kind of a continuous pedestrian flow around the building, it gave us at least a one-for-one replacement of the structured decks we were losing as part of losing the east wing and losing some on the west wing, so that they would still exist just at a lower elevation, and it really makes use of some of the space between the bulkhead and the building. We wound up with this big area where the east wing would no longer be, or, excuse me, the east wing would no longer be. In talking with the Recreation Director, we realized that that's something that they could reprogram at a later point in time, it could become just hangout space for beachgoers, sit down at blanket and, you know, picnic, it could be a place where they set up some type of sporting activities, but it gives them additional beach area that they don't currently have, and, you know, the feedback we got from them was that that was useful. Currently, in the east wing, there is a space for parking a maintenance vehicle for the beachcombing and so forth, so we were creating an area under the building where they could pull a gator-type vehicle in and close the doors that would be flood-compliant, it would have breakaway walls around it. As part of moving the building into the parking lot, by taking the east wing off of the building, we're actually able to move it this way and move it down, meaning that we can save this berm, save the trees, save the main utility pole that's in front of the building. Otherwise, if we moved the building this way, we would have had to obliterate all that and then put it back. So that seemed to be a good design, as far as the feedback we got from the committee. We're showing work to improve the bulkhead, as Mr. Bradley mentioned, there were some aspects of the bulkhead that contributed to some of the damage that happened during Hurricane Sandy, there are openings in the bulkhead that were not completely resistant to being penetrated by water and waves. Currently, the Department of Public Works is shepherding a project to close those openings in, which we agree with. We're proposing that we also armor the front of the bulkhead with stones that would mostly be buried under the sand, but the purpose of them would be that as coastal storms come in and erode the sands in front of the bulkhead, there would still be a stone structure there to protect the bulkhead and to dissipate wave energy. So we have a cross-section of that I can show you. Currently, the bulkhead comes up to approximately elevation 12, the sand comes up The sand comes up pretty high. It's actually only about 2 feet or so below the top of the bulkhead. So our proposal would be to dig down in front of the bulkhead and build this boulder revetment that would be there after a storm recedes, so that during a storm, you would have sand erosion, just because of the nature of the beach, the waves are going to take some of the sand away, but you would still have this structure that armors the bulkhead. What we're also looking to do is make some improvements that have been suggested by the Flood and Erosion Control Board, one being an extension of that boulder revetment to connect over to Ricker's Beach. And also, you know, they've talked about, you know, the idea of a barrier or a dune between the Long Island Sound and the parking lot or the beach area. We feel that by elevating the space under the building with sand and bringing that level up does have that benefit. And there are other things that they've suggested which we, you know, are still discussing. Couple of ancillary things come up with this new design. One is that we feel that it's important that we soften the look of the building with some landscaping, and that's something that's still being discussed with the committee. But we envision there being some planting beds between the parking lot and the beach area, between the parking lot and the building, and between the bulkhead and the boardwalk-type low deck that we envision around the back of the building. And that's something if, you know, should we, should the committee, you know, direct us to, we will get a landscape architect on board to consult with. As far as what the appearance of the building is, it's going to be more in scale with what is, we think, what is currently on the site. So currently, this is what the existing building looks like. This was actually an earlier rendering we did with the building elevated, but you can see the length of it. This big window wall being the gathering room that looks out onto the sound, this arched top window being the center of the entry from the parking lot, the locker wing is over here, on the parking lot side, over here on the beach side, with the reduction in the East Wing. This whole end is gone, and you might have a much more, we think, balanced look to the building, where it's not quite symmetrical, but it at least keeps, you know, this side of the building in scale with this side of the building. And a similar view from the back with the lockers gone. So we basically just blend the roof lines in to make it look like they always belonged there as part of the design. So, at this point, I, I don't know, maybe it's a good stopping point to see if you have any questions, or if there's anything else, any other areas you want me to cover that I haven't.
Could you just flip down that existing condition when it's a little thing that I think is back there somewhere?
Yeah, currently, what we have is, okay, for reference, this is the bulkhead we're talking about. The top of that's at elevation 12. The finished floor of the building is at elevation 11. You have beams underneath the floor structure of the building, supported on concrete piers and spread footings. The footings don't go down very deep. Before the storm, they only went down a couple of feet below the sand level. Underneath the foundations, there's the loose sand, and then a layer of the organic soil, the peat, that's around elevation zero, or mean sea level, as you might think of it. Below the peat is more dense sand that actually would be suitable for bearing foundations on.
I think the point here is that these foundations, these footings, just to make sure that all the terminology is correct, these are the concrete footings that exist today, the timber cribbing that's underneath them, because this sand was scoured out underneath. And there was an assumption in the original design that there would be 4 feet of compacted sand between the peat and these existed, and the new footings, at the time, the new footings. So, two things have happened here. The grade has dropped, and the sand, the remaining sand is closer to the peat, which is an unsuitable condition to build a building on. Now, the peat doesn't exist throughout the, underneath the building, because a lot of it was excavated and replaced with crushed stone and beach sand during the construction process. So there are plenty of places that have, where this material was taken out and newer material was put back in. The problem is, in doing the test borings throughout the building, and actually going inside the building and drilling down through the floor and into the soil below, that the engineers discovered that there is still peat, and there is loose sand. And so the real question is how to overcome that, so that the same thing doesn't happen to us again. And this shows you the new pile configuration, timber pile configuration, that obviously goes through the peat and is founded, the tips of the piles are founded in this coarse, dense sand below the peat.
Another issue which I did not mention is that any type of fix to this building is made difficult by the fact that the building is there, and there's not much room under it to work in. And that's one of the issues that has constantly come up with the Option 1, which is just the repair back to the way it was, is just in order to do some of those repairs will mean some very labor-intensive, potentially dangerous work under the building where the foundations have failed, or cutting open massive sections of the floor just to get to the work. You know, once the build, if we take, go down the road of Option 7, and we move the building out of the way, the work is much more safer, and can be done much more quickly and reliably.
We didn't mention, and it's in the project briefing, and I don't know, given the hour, whether you want to go through Options 1 through 7, but they are described in detail in the briefing document. And they are different variations of the building, and they've all been vetted out through engineering, through constructability issues, and through FEMA requirements. And the other options fail for various different reasons, and they're described in the report. And if I can quickly run through them now, or we can...
What's your preference?
I've had an opportunity to review this document, and I would, my question actually would be is, you know, how much discussion was there at your committee level about the other options? It sounds to me, was the committee unanimous in coming forward with Option 7? I guess that would be my only...
Well, one, it was...
I could speak to the other options, I guess.
No, I think we'll get through, I think the committee voted in favor of Option 7, and the vote, I think, was regated in 7 to 1-0.
Yeah, that's correct.
7 in favor, 1 abstained.
Thank you.
The committee vote for Option 7, first to answer your first question, I would say that over the past three or four months, these options have been discussed. I have plenty of committee members present here, and they're all nodding their heads, I think, or maybe rolling their eyes, we've had. We've been through every single option, every which way, and have come up with two. Voting on one and voting, and agreeing by consensus that we would continue to investigate the so-called low-cost option, which is to leave the building in place, ensure it, I mean, repair it in accordance with the scope of work that the insurance company is proposing. Our problem, there are several problems with Option 1, but one of the main ones is that the insurance company is suggesting that these footings be underpinned, which means excavated out below the footing and concrete installed below the footing. It's called an underpinning operation. It's done section at a time, all the way around and under each footing. The problem is, is you get down through, you have to find, for underpinning to be successful and approved by the engineer in the building department, you have to keep on going down until you find good bearing soil, or good bearing sand in this case. And so you'll be getting closer and closer to that lens of peat, and then defeating the assumption that there should be 4 feet of sand between the footing and the peat. These are all very large spread footings, with the idea that the pressure from the building would be distributed over at least 4 feet of compact sand. I think that was the, or engineer's original assumption.
That was the original philosophy, as to why there were footings there and not piles. They felt, the original engineer felt that there, the sand was a cushion over the peat. Not taking into account the coastal storm impact on the sand, the erosion and the scour, or the liquefaction of the sand.
So, we had, by the time you looked at the variations, we had probably 11 points of discussion, and probably 7 to 9 options. We went back and forth, and it was actually not easy to track them, because one would kind of blend into another. And so, on the one hand, you had the repair and protect in place, and on the far left hand, on the far right hand, you had moving the entire structure off the site into the parking lot, rebuilding the foundations and moving it back. So you went from 3 million to 7 million. And in between those, you had various options. A couple were knocked out, or two or three were knocked out because of FEMA requirements. As soon as you spend more than 50% of the appraised value of the building, then you have to raise the building. So, that's where we are, and as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, a work in process as far as refining the dollars and refining the scope for Option 7. And you might want, I don't know whether you want to speak anything further to the engineering principles between 1 and 7? I mean...
Well, there's, the two big differences between the two options is, with Option 1, we're not lifting the building up and elevating it. When the building was constructed, the flood zone was an A-zone, which is mapped as an area where there's predominantly still waters and very mild waves. It has since been remapped as a V-zone, which is a coastal, high-hazard, high-energy zone, which is probably where it should've been. It just had not been mapped that way in prior years. So in 2013, the maps changed, after the building was completed. So, you know, we feel one of the goals of the project should be to make the building fully compliant, to elevate it, and to mitigate the potential risk in future years that it, the building either becomes uninsurable or cost-prohibitively insurable for the V-zone condition. So with Option 1, you still have a building that's low, and it's still supported on shallow, excuse me, on shallow-spread footings, bearing on the loose sands. With Option 7, we moved the building out of the way, put in a new pile-foundation system that is driven to a level at which it's not sensitive to any kind of disturbance from wave action. And the building's put back at a higher elevation, so that it's actually above the required flood elevation, as many homes in the beach area have been doing subsequent to Sandy.
So the building would go up 3 and 1/2 feet in elevation from where it is today. And it would be different, because it would be smaller in the fact, driven by the fact that the locker wing would no longer be there, and in substitute for the locker wing, there would be the restrooms and changing rooms and day lockers. So, the bulkhead would be protected by riprap on its outboard face all around. And so the building sits on, it may, it may appear to be higher when you drive by it, by 3 and 1/2 feet, but it sits in this plateau or island of new site, of raised site. So it's softened, any increase in height is softened by the fact the site comes up with it, I think is the best way to describe it.
Yeah. So in other words, if you, if you were to site from, you know, a neighbor's deck across at the building, you would notice the ridge height would be a little bit taller, by 3 and 1/2 feet. But when you're standing in the parking lot, the intent is that with the birmingham around the building, and landscaping, and careful placement of steps and ramps, that you don't really perceive the building as being way up there, that it kind of softens the terrace look of the building.
One driver is that the contractors, the building moving contractors that looked at the building, gave numbers and provided a points of discussion or recommendations that the East Wing would be less expensive to tear it down and rebuild it than it would be to move it. So that's how we started, and a lot of questions like that would lead us into yet other variations. So those are the kind of discussions that took place. But full circle to your question, every option was thoroughly debated. I don't think anyone got any more or less airtime than the other. And a very, obviously a very opinionated, and I have to tell you, a great committee.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you. It's, as you said the last time you were here, that it would, it would happen that way, in terms of certain questions got answered, which would lead to certain options and certain conversations. I would like to say that yes, I think it is an amazing committee, and the dedication, you know, as you noted in your report, the attendance and the participation, and certainly what I'm sure have been very lively conversations among the group. But just, we've talked a lot about engineering and technicalities, and I would kind of like to come at this a little bit from the user standpoint, in terms of perhaps a senior citizen, someone in a wheelchair, a parent with a stroller, things like that, in terms of what it might be like, not just visually, as you approach the building, and seeing that it is, not noticing necessarily that it's higher, but also, how do I get on the beach, then, if I have, say I have my beach carrier behind me with all my gear in it, especially now that there aren't going to be lockers in this option? How will that work?
As I mentioned before, our general approach was to keep two ends flanking the building that were rampable and accessible for, you know, wagons, strollers, wheelchairs. And we realized quickly, it's not just wheelchairs, it's everybody having strollers and other things to bring it onto the beach. So, we have an existing pathway at the parking lot near the playground at the west end of the building, and we're looking to maintain that. So you would be able to come up that ramp, we would break it off from the building, just because the building is now going to be higher, and we would have a direct connection onto the beach at the west end towards the playground. Okay, so you'd still be able to go right out. The grade over at this end of the bulkhead is basically going to be the same as the grade around the building. So it'd be a path right out. From the top of that existing ramp, if you want to get into the building, you would then take a left-hand turn, come down to the front, and connect with ramps that bring you back to the front entrance. So that's, that's that route from this end of the parking lot. The other route we planned on was at the west end, excuse me, the east end of the building, to start off right at the parking lot level, ramp up to this intermediate sand level where the lockers used to be, and then ramp up again to this new porch surrounding the two new changing rooms. Once you're up here, you can communicate all the way around the building at the same level, on the outside, or you can go, you know, either through the front entrance or around the back entrance near the office, and communicate on the inside. As far as access to the beach on this end, ramped access would just be by going across this sand area, and we'll probably have some pathways with hard surfaces around the perimeter of it. But you would come down here and come out at this end, right, basically right where this proposed riprap berm would be, that connects to Ricker's Beach. So you would come up to this intermediate level, come across, and out to the beach this way. In addition to that, there would also be stairs built in at four points over the bulkhead. They would not be rampable, obviously, but they would be additional access points.
Okay, so if you have a stroller or a wheelchair, then essentially, it's that path over there towards the playground, and...
Or you're coming up and out and around this way.
So, but I don't, you're not at the phase yet where you actually have the drawing of what a path might be, because I don't see it.
We actually are working on that now, because the committee authorized us to proceed with design development drawings, so we will have that drawing in the very near future.
Okay. But that's good to know, that it's, that that's also, of course, part of the conversation, as you all have been talking about accessibility and the issues with that.
That goes back to feedback that the committee has got at meetings, as far as what some of the users are, you know, are... as what some of the users are, you know, are concerned about.
Any further questions?
Well, it's, I guess, just further comment. Thank you. There's a lot to think about and a lot to take in here, and I think the other piece of what I wanted to say is, I remember when we first appointed the, the committee and when we said that this would be a very difficult job, and that essentially in the end, that most likely that everyone might be slightly unhappy or possibly, you know, very unhappy, and that there would also be, everyone would also be happy. So the compromise position is, is one, I think you've done a great job in terms of trying to balance the needs and addressing all the pieces, both the technical, the community needs, the fiscal needs, all of it. So I appreciate that work.
We, we have done our best to consider anything that was brought before us and have spent a tremendous amount of time, twice a month since December, balancing the different solutions against the technical requirements, against the permitting requirements, against the FEMA requirements, against the financial requirements, and against basic constructability issues. I mean, something as simple as one of these options has raising the building in place and driving piles underneath it in sections while the building is up. A lot of risks there that we considered. The fact that a storm, Murphy's Law would be that a fall or winter storm would come right when this building is 20 feet in the air. And then we have the question of the bearing of, of the conditions of the soil under the building. Will it take the kind of pressure of jacking the building up and holding it on this cribbing, which is nothing more than blocks and timbers holding it in the air? So everything, every option went through, not necessarily systematic, but a list in our minds and also that we presented, is, is, you know, checking it off, does it do this, does it do that, how much is it going to cost? And so far, I think that we've done, we've, we've done our due diligence and we do have a public, we do have the design developments drawing, drawings being presented at our next meeting, and we have set aside a public comment, open public comment period, so we're hoping to hear if there are any questions then.
That leads me to one other question, if I may. Will that session be taped by Fair TV? Is that, is that the plan?
Yes.
That may be.
Yes. Yes. Answer your questions, yes.
Okay. That's wonderful.
Anything else?
That's it for now. Thank you.
The, I want to echo Kristen's comments in the sense that this committee has done a tremendous job, and I want to thank all the members that are here and any members that aren't, for the work that you've done. I, you know, as I listen to your talk, it, the construction techniques and how you're approaching this seem to get more involved in terms of which option you look at and will drive the cost more, and that seems to be a much more complex analysis as you're evaluating options than a typical building project as you go through that. So I want to compliment you in terms of handling that as you go through. You did mention that the committee has recommended option seven.
Correct.
You said your option one is there for comparison for, and so my question to you is, as much as this is a report and update, and you'll be coming back with kind of a formal recommendation and resolution, what's going to be your approach? How do you include option one, not include option, well, how's that comparison going to work? How will that work?
The committee left off with voting on option seven and proceeding with it, but there was a good debate on making sure that the committee had at the ready the low-cost option, or the lower-cost option, which is the repair and protect in place. And the, the repair and protect in place option is actually being discussed tomorrow with the building officials, and it's already been discussed with Jim Wen as far as FEMA requirements are concerned. And we need better numbers to make sure that the repair and protect in place doesn't breach the FEMA 50% rule, which would mean it's defeated by the regulation. In other words, it means we have to raise the building. And so, and then we have another issue which we've heard about plenty of times on the committee, and that is the professional engineer's opinion regarding whether or not the repair and protect in place is, is actually engineering feasible, who will sign off on it. So it does, the insurance company's engineer, who's required to just tail, take you in scope and cost back to where the building was the day before the storm, is simply saying, all I'm telling you is, take the building back before it was before the storm, and we'll pay for those repairs.
Well, I think, having sat in on those sessions, there's a very distinct difference in objective and focus. The insurance company engineer has one obligation and one goal, to come up with a number that we can pay you in terms of the damage that was done to the building, not a recommendation on to build it that way, just that this is what we owe you. We owe you a building like it was on October 28th.
Right.
So I think that's a much different objective than what, what you all had in mind in doing that. There will be some more discussion on that. Obviously, you know, there are a number of concerns from building permits to FEMA to how that works out. Is that going to be part of the presentation when you make your final recommendation?
Yes.
Which will be at our next meeting? So that's part of my reason for the question.
Yes. Yeah, we, the, we will come prepared with the numbers and the scope of work for the repair option that the committee is recommending, so.
Okay, thank you. You touched briefly on flood mitigation. As I look at the plans here, this is, is both raising the building, but it also seems like raising the, the sand, the dunes, in essence, creating a much bigger barrier from this, I'm going to call it light lot or site, to the neighborhood behind.
That's correct. We're, we're proposing to fill in the area under the building.
Okay.
So that, that will create more of a physical mass between the building and, or between the parking lot and the beach. And the parking lot is basically at the neighborhood level.
And going back to the original charge, we did ask the committee to look at what I'm going to call onsite efforts to mitigate any flooding problems. But as you pointed out correctly, there are plenty of more openings along the beach at both sides, as well as just so much marshland out there, the marshland's going to, the marsh will raise up with whatever the flooding elevation is at that point. So this will not, this additional barrier, which may in fact keep water from coming through to the neighborhood here, does not necessarily impact the overall flooding in the beach area per se.
Yeah. We, we are mitigating the risk at the site.
Or the contribution from the site, but the, the water has a number of ways still available to it to get to the neighborhood.
Well, it'll want to go out the same way it did before, the same way it did in Irene, the same way it did Sandy. It'll come in and go out if the building stays the way it is.
Yeah. I just want to be clear that, that as much as you're making significant changes and significant improvements in the flood mitigation through this site, that doesn't necessarily change the flood mitigation in the beach area per se.
That, that's correct, and I think that's an important point because we're not, we're not making this a flood barrier, we're just taking as many measures as we can in, in the project to improve the condition.
Where there's a boat with a half dozen leaks in it, what we're doing is fixing one leak.
Right. I suppose that's a way to put it, sure.
All right. All right. And then, I know we've talked, you and I've talked, and it's starting to get out in terms of the reimbursement side, in terms of what this costs. Can you step through what, both what option seven is projected at this point? I realize you may refine that before our final, and then we can have a brief conversation about the reimbursement side, and I'll add in a few points from there.
Okay. Option seven is described in our report to you, to raise and temporarily, temporarily relocate the west wing, to furnish and install timber piles and a new reinforced concrete foundation, reset the west wing at the FEMA V-zone elevation, repair the west wing MEP infrastructure, demolish the east wing, design and construct a smaller east wing in addition, addition on timber pile-supported foundation at FEMA V-zone elevation that will accommodate restrooms, changing rooms, day lockers. This option includes additional covered deck space, additional deck on grade, and grade, and grade level additional beach area, and it includes modification in protecting the existing bulkhead. The estimated cost is 4.5 million. And so far, I understand that we have an insurance settlement and a grant, which brings us up to 2.2 million 250,000 at this point? That's kind of a question and a statement?
Yeah. To take that through, there are five sources of money, if you will, in terms of where the reimbursement or the cost coverage would come from. One is the insurance settlement, which at the moment is 1.75 million dollars. There is some talk of supplementals possibly down the road based on what we uncover as we go through, but based on our discussions with the insurance company and the rules and regulations and restrictions surrounding those supplementals, I'm not sure that's a very likely source of additional money. $500,000 that has come from the community block grant funding through the state, federal money but through the state, so that's in hand, and that's the 2.25 number that you mentioned, 2 million 250,000. We have, when I'm putting together FEMA applications in two categories. FEMA applications that go towards the repair of the building, and for eligible costs, we would get a 75% reimbursement on those. And FEMA cost reimbursement for hazard mitigation. Those costs associated, I'm going to say primarily with the raising of the building, but there might be some other hazard mitigation costs that are included as eligible costs in that. In both those categories, Joe Michelangelo, our FEMA consultant, Bob Mayer, and myself will be reviewing what we have there, and certainly will include you in that, and we can talk between now and the next meeting as to where that's coming from. But those are two different FEMA approaches. Both are 75% reimbursement, but the sticking point is eligible costs, and that's what we're trying to get a better handle on, so we can come up with a better range of what would be a reasonable expectation for funding. And the fifth and final category is town. So at some point for the costs not covered by those, it comes back to the town to cover them. So we're going to try and get as, as reasonable an estimate as we can on what the reimbursement funds we can get from other sources are, and what the net cost of the town will be into it.
And the timing on that is kind of a fact sheet or a summary?
We'll have that available for your presentation with the board of selectmen when you make your resolution.
If we have, can get any helpful hints before our public meeting on the 14th or our normal meeting, with hopefully more public attendance?
Well, those, those are the five categories. It's just a question of, of working with our FEMA consultants to get the, for lack of a better term, their opinion, their best guess at the eligible costs and what's included, and working with them and Joe Michelangelo to determine which ones are considered, are categorized as repair costs, and which ones are categorized as flood mitigation. And again, the biggest bulk of that would be attributed to the raising of the building.
Right.
All right. There are issues with, you know, the modifications of the bulkhead, is that considered, you know, external landscaping and not part of the building, and not considered part of this project? It may be part of the costs that we incur, but it may not be something FEMA recognizes as their obligation or reimburses for. In addition, the, they're going to look at the insurance money, the community block grant money, so that we don't, we don't get to double charge. So there's got to be a unique, if we get, collect a reimbursement under one of these programs, we're not going to get reimbursed again under another.
Right.
So it's looking at the total cost, seeing what's there, and break those out. That's why our FEMA consultants are, as part of this process, are so important. That's why Mr. Michelangelo's involvement is important, and certainly there'll be communication back and forth with your committee to make sure that we understand those cost components and are getting the best categorization that we can, so that we have a reasonable estimate going for it. The difficulty also with FEMA is that it's reimbursement, so it will not come till, be long after we have finished construction.
Right.
So that is one of the other challenges there. And then again, just to emphasize it, I want to compliment you again on holding the public hearing on August 14th, giving the, a public a chance to weigh in. Now that all this has come through, you have some recommendations to make, some explanation for why that's the recommendation your committee got behind, what the other selections were, to provide a public hearing for that. Thank you again for thinking of that. So again, within this two-month process, we've had a, or three-month process, we've had a Parks and Rec presentation, we've had a presentation to the board of selectmen, we're going to have a follow-up presentation, Q and A with the board of selectmen and the resolution, we'll have a public presentation, we'll have a board of finance presentation and resolution vote, we'll have a presentation to the RTM, a report and update like this one, we'll then go to the RTM and subcommittees, and then again to the final RTM meeting at the end of September for a resolution or vote, all of which, again, is lined up to make sure that our, we come up with the best solution for our community, and there's plenty of opportunity for all the stakeholders to weigh in.
And I think that our goal, if we can do it, is to start the project on the 9th of October. Now that may require, which we're discussing, or we're not, but the construction manager is discussing with purchasing, some early releases with the caveat, obviously, in the bidding documents, that if the funding fails, then there's no contract, no opportunity. Often done, especially in the private sector, often done in the public sector, I think Fairfield's done it before. But in the piles and concrete in the building building, if you had those at the ready in the first part of October, it would help everybody try to make that summer 2015 date. This is compressed, it always was compressed from the, the whole process when we started it out. When we did our project schedule, there was a little bit of, you know, hopeful, you know, let's hope it works, comments in the beginning because we were trying to do so much and get so much information and not have it all pile up at the end. So we've done a pretty good job on that, we're getting great support from Kevin's firm as far as drawings are concerned, and so we're going to, in the next two building committee meetings, we're going to be in pretty good shape as far as information is concerned.
All right. And again, just getting back to the comment, the discussion you and I had when we first talked about this project and going way back to then, the goal here is to come up with the right decision for our community and not rush it through and not focus on so much on the date as getting the job and the project done properly. And do you feel you've had time to do that?
Oh, I think we have the information. I think the committee has the credibility, and I think the committee has the information to adequately deal with any of the variations or any of the suggestions, or the public mood, or the RTM's mood, or requirements, or whatever it may be. We're here to deliver the facts and the message and a recommendation. This is, doing it for a living, I can tell you, this is a very difficult project in that it is not just a storm repair. It's a, it's a, it's a storm repair and it's a betterment, if you want to look at it that way. It is compensating for assumptions that were made with the early foundations, and those, those assumptions may have been perfectly fine, but now the beach is lower, closer to the peat, and the beach has been, we can call it damaged. As an ex-underpinning guy, I can tell you that as you start going below these footings and trying to put form and pour concrete columns underneath the existing footings, whether it's one or 80, it's a, you're going to have to somehow find good material down there to start your concrete, and you might be going down eight or 10 feet in water. This is not what one would like to do.
Yeah. If I can paraphrase my takeaway from that, if you look at this presentation on, on the, if you will, of repair of Penfield, what we've really spent 80% of our time talking about is the foundation. What this really is, is the issue is this is not the same geology or soil underground, whatever, that we built the original building on. So one of the challenges for your committee has been to look at what changed, and what can you do to bring that back, or what do you have to change about the foundation system to do that? And as you pointed out, the original foundation system would have difficulty in this environment. So the, the reason for the change, the reason for the complexity is, and the reason for the, you know, the number of engineering firms involved, this is not just putting up a house on the same ground, we're looking at literally a changing geology underneath it, the engineering involved in determining what that is, and then what foundation system would work with the new geology is what's been a challenge for you.
The, the site's been a challenge, both from a flooding standpoint and the quality of the soil below the building. That's, that's really what it is. Do you have any wrap-up comments?
You know, I'll just reiterate that the committee has been, I think, very deliberate in considering all the options. You know, we tried to respond to all their questions and queries. They've solicited public comment at every one of their meetings for whoever was there. and I'm sure they'll continue to do so. And we'll respond to things as they come up. Right now, we're in the mode of working on the design development drawings, so that we can release them to the construction manager to get a more accurate price number, even though the rough order or magnitude cost they've been working on is, we feel, a comfortable number. You know, we're hoping they, they can sharpen the pencil on that in time with some of these meetings that are coming up. If all goes well, we don't see an issue with being able to be in the position of starting construction in October.
Okay, and if that happens, then potentially a target date of Memorial Day weekend might be possible? Did I understand?
2015.
In the vicinity of Memorial Day.
Yeah. Spoken like a politician.
You heard it here first.
All right. Thank you. Any further comments?
Just in terms of the public comment and input, so what often happens, you have been working diligently and offering public comment at each of your meetings, but now, as this project begins to come to a head, the public will become more engaged, and particularly as people are coming back from vacation. If they're not able to attend the meeting, I know that you've been wonderful about distributing emails that folks have sent your way as well, so that people have other options in terms of communicating with you as a committee.
Right.
Rather than simply being present, though, that would be wonderful, because then you can engage in the conversation.
We've, we've allowed a, pretty much an informal forum at these meetings, and would like to keep it that way. If we have a lot of feedback, then we're going to have to go to the two-minute rule and line everybody up. But there have been plenty of questions halfway through with discussion, from the audience and from town, Joe, Jerry, Joe Michelangelo, Jerry Lombardo, and others. The cooperation from town departments has been excellent. The presentation by Tom Stanky on the history of that beach, I think, changed a couple of minds, as far as why you would have a building there and not have it properly protected. But, this is, this is a difficult project, it's not just a building repair. It's a change, it's a change in program, we're being forced to do them, if we go, the FEMA new V-zone elevation, which was dropped on the town on...
This, last year, about a year ago at this time.
Yeah, after the storm. So, we'll keep at it, and our minds are open, and we've made a recommendation as a committee. We have more fine-tuning to go, which I mentioned in the briefing, and I think we'll be able to handle the public questions. We have a ton of information, too much, to present today.
And again, this session's on Fair TV, our next board of selectmen meeting will be on Fair TV, the RTM meeting in August, where you'll do a presentation will be on Fair TV, the board of finance meeting in September will be on Fair TV, and the RTM meeting at the end of September will be on Fair TV. And again, August 14th, in the Board of Ed building, Board of Ed conference room.
Right.
7 o'clock?
Right, 6.
6 o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Will also be on Fair TV. That's August 14th at 6 o'clock.
And live, according to our Fair TV guy.
Rumors by Fair TV, in the back of the room?
Yeah.
All right. Again, thank you...
August 14th, it's a big day here.
Yes, it is. The, all right, thank you very much for the report and the comprehensive nature. Good luck in your further deliberations, and look forward to hearing what you have to say on the 14th and, and our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, moving on. We're up to item 14, a tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. I'll second it. Any amendments?
Yes. I move that we amend by adding the amounts at the end of the sentence, $8,981.93.
Very good. I'll second that. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
The item as amended as before us, any further discussion on the item?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. To hear, consider and act upon any new communications, I do not have any, and to hear, consider and act upon any other business, there's none that I know of. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.